Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Minister of the City Council. Well, we're one, I'm sorry na kayo, alam ko overtime na kayo sa session. Eh, tinawag muna namin kayo para mag-recess, so that you can resume sessions later on. Well, one, thank you very much despite that, uh... Atay Hani and I declared no work today, but due to some, uh... A reason, emergency reason or situation, uh... We have to address the city. Now, I'll try to make it, I make this quick with you. Uh, one, I want to, uh... I want you to share your, your, your understanding, knowledge, legal, uh... Expertise also, some, you are lawyers, uh... This is nowadays situation, uh, guys, okay? Atay, sige, kayo muna. You want me to say the situation, or kayo ang isitwasyon? Kayo, kamusta kayo? Kamusta sa atin? Sa mga, uh... I would assume that meron na kayong update sa inyong kani-kaniang respective districts and communities? Because you represent the people in your respective district. Kamusta ba? Kamusta, uh, sa district? Yes, kamusta?
Mayor?
Yes, please, as Doctora Irma Ponsor, yes.
Yes, thank you mayor. Mayor, so far, Sagdano naman, not really much affected. Kasi konti lang, kung meron ang ash fall, pero sobrang konti, minimal.
Okay, district two? Yes, uh, Roma Ramirez, please.
Ang great, kakailan mo sa district one, konti lang po 'yung ash fall. Kanina po daw, parang ganun pa rin daw, patong konti lang. So 'yung hangin naman, hindi pa rin daw puro 'yung amoy.
No, walang amoy sa sulfuric, uh, and silica.
Pero po 'yung mga ash falls, same lang, konti lang.
Kasi ang amoy usually malapit, sa malapit mo siya ma'amoy, yung pang sunog. Uh, district three? District three? Yes, uh, siya lahat 'yung isip.
Hello, sa district four, with respect po, sa bangbang, dito po sa mga medical supplies and equipment, meron pong mga ash pro, business owners, and ati advantage po 'yung tragedy, na saan po 'yung presyo po mga N95 mask na ordinary po, binibeta ng eighty, ninety pesos, one hundred pesos, o nga po sa ash, much as three hundred pesos.
Yeah, we already deal with that delay, just so you know. We're gonna address them and we're gonna, uh, just issue the show cost order to these respective, uh, medical supplies, uh, for them to explain, or else we will cancel their business permit in proprietary, uh, in this type of situation. You know, the local chief said he has the power to, uh... If he have the power to issue permit, we have also the power to cancel permit, uh, particularly in protecting the interest of the general public. Uh, district five? Four, four, Doc, Doc Louis? Yeah, doctor?
Four? Yes, sir, when I'm driving my motorbike, I can eat in the ash fall, in the case, talagang you can feel it so...
Ash today, is there a presence of, uh...
Yeah.
Okay, district five?
Yes.
Uh, Joey, uh, please on the third, please.
Ka, mas malalabong 'yung ash fall, tahafo, ang mas concern namin, kasi mga baka, sila, lalo na 'yung pulibard, maganda 'yung implementation po ng perfume, kasi tahafo, kung sumulat 'yung mga tao, masok sa lugaran talagang baka, kaya 'yan ganun, uh, mas nobelang sa nasalaki, from the process ng perfume sa mga baka.
Is there a presence of, uh, so good sand?
Ah, meron po, ah, meron po mas minimal na.
Uh, district six, yes, Joel, uh, Joel Par?
So far po, mayor, sa district, uh, six, kagabi lang di po mer- medyo meron mga ash fall, pero ngayon po, wala na pong...
Ah, walang ash fall?
Kagabi.
Pero may ash sa presence ng community.
Yes, yes.
Yes, uh, Councillor, uh, Majority Floor Leader, uh, uh, Joel Chua?
Um, unexpected 'yung ash fall na tumama dito sa atin. So, we, we do not know what is the, uh, risk in terms of health, sa atin pong mga residente, kasi nagbabasa po namin, medyo pakadelicado to.
Exactly, that's why I called this emergency meeting with you guys. Now you are talk, uh, the, uh, local executive body and a local legislative body are now meeting tonight. That's why I thank you for your time, for, for the simple reason, then I'm going to share you my observation, you know? Uh... There is a presence of... Ash fall... From last night... In our streets, in the surface, in our houses, in the plants, everything. These are still existing as we speak, in our communities, no? One, I hope God, Jesus for that matter, uh, ilayo 'yung hangin, papuntang dagar, but hindi natin kontrol 'yan, that's what we call nature. These are uncertain, uh, uncertainty 'yan, pag 'yan ang binasihan natin. Let's be factual with our, uh, situation. Is there ash in our city? Yes, there is, now, so if there is ash, these are existing in our surface, in the roads, streets, walls, cars, plants, bobong, and everything, they're everywhere. Meron tayong mga doctor dito, Doctora Irma Ponsor, Doctora, uh, Doctor Louis Chua? Siapa doctor natin?
Doc Fox.
Doc Fox, and dyan na 'yung ating MHD, I think he will report, uh, in a few minutes now. Uh, Doctor Ha, our Vice Mayor is a doctor also, now. Well, expert says, no? That this type of, uh, sand or ash, uh, one, there is sulfur on it, two, there is silica. Silica is a, a material to make glass. The question is, atay, wala na tayong ash fall, ngayon, wala na. So far, may awan diyo, sana nga, gumigil na. But, the ash deposit still exist in our city. Ang question ko, or Do- Doctor Louis, is there, uh... An effect?
Yes.
To any person, uh, especially with those chronic, uh, disease?
Obstructive pulmonary diseases, yes, definitely, mayor.
Sila ang unang tatamaan?
Yes, the pregnant women, the children, and the seniors, so. Especially to sa mga less immunosistant, they can be easily affected.
But the general public will be affected?
Of course.
In the long term?
Yes.
Okay, Doctora Ilmar Ponsor, as a doctor, what do you think of this? I know, you, you are not pulmonary doctors, but, uh, one way or another, you have an idea of the effects of this type of, uh, sand in, in our air? Fine particles, you have to remember, ngayon, nandyan dyan 'yung sand. Until we clear it, no, it will go, ang payo ko sabihan niyo 'yung mga tawa, wag wawalisin, it's useless. Wag wawalisin, kasi sasama lang 'yan sa hangin, babalik-balik lang 'yan, it's going to spread. Dapat dyan tinutubig, but anyway, going back to my question, Doctora Irma Ponsor, what do you think of this, uh, uh, kind of ash, uh, present in our, uh, streets?
Yes, mayor, yes, mayor, kasi po, mostly ang composition ng ash fall are minerals.
Minerals?
Mostly is silica.
Silica?
Forty-five to seventy-five percent 'yan silica, ang ash fall. And it will really affect our respiratory system, especially the children, the pregnant women, the old people, kaya talagang delikado po siya. There is a toxic substance in it. Although 'yung ibang component niya, like aluminum, iron, manganese, meron din sila, pero ma-konti lang siya.
So, it is not fair for our citizens to inhale this, uh, okay? Uh, sino pa doctor sa inyo, sa council? Wala na, si ate na. Oh, sige, let's listen to Doctor Fox, I think Doctor Fox can apply that sa... You went to, uh, DOH? Si Doctor Fox is the Manila Health Department Director.
Good evening po, mayor. Actually, the reason why I went to DOH, because they were giving us additional four thousand mask. So it so happened, I went also to Asic Berheere of DOH. I asked her, kung ano po ba 'yung, um, pronouncement ng Department of Health regarding po dito sa ash fall na'to? Kasi po, sabi namin, gusto namin sana sa State of Manila na mag declare ng State of Calamity.
Yes.
Yes, ang sabi po niya, ano po ba, kung doon DOH itself, wala po po silang pronouncement regarding this matter. Gaano po baka, kumbaga tahaas hardus, 'yung ash fall, 'yung content nito?
Ang sabi niya?
Ang sabi po niya, wala po, wala po po silang, uh... Ang sabi niya, we need to go to DNR, for DNR to study, kung ano po, and then they will give us the pronouncement. So, sila rin po sa DOH, until now, they are still waiting. 'Yun po 'yung latest na sinabi natin.
Okay, sige, guys. We are in a recording, wonder. Niya'ti alam ko, uh, ang epekto rito, that's why I, I really wanted experts here, uh, na... Okay, ganito na. Will we allow our, uh, citizen... To continue to inhale without protective, uh, uh, mask or measures? That the city can avail with these resources, to protect the interest of the general public? Or we just continue to... Or we, or we address this confrontationally? I mean like literal, uh... Addressing it to minimize the effect of this in the long term, sa health situation ng ating mga...
Preventive, mayor?
Kao, atay, anong tingin?
Prevention.
Let's hear the Vice Mayor, as the head of the City Council.
Mayor, I just spoke with, uh... I just spoke with the three of our directors, Doctor Ratin, uh, Doctor Sakdalan, and Doctor Abadilia. Sila pong tatlo, uh, they would suggest talaga, uh, massive purchase, purchase po of face mask, uh, for preventive, uh, measures po.
Okay, kasi this is, this is, that's why you're being asked, because, uh, you're going back to the session, huh? Now, under existing rules in purchasing, uh, limited ang capacity natin for emergency purchases, not until we declare State of Calamity. Now, there are many types of state declaring State of Calamities. One, uh, eminent, uh, uh, ano 'yung, uh, alam mo nang medya dyan? Nag-iexist na? Two, uh, you know? The hazards and the effects of this, uh, uh, situation. Anong epekto nito sa general public? Kasi marami 'yan, nasira pa kalgye, nasira pa komunikasyon, eto ba 'yung makasasama sa kalusugan ng tao? I think will fall on the latter, 'yung, uh, uh, health, uh... But, uh, you know, this is just the start of the year, and we may... May or just hope naman sana, face, uh, some challenges through the years, but, uh... Meron lang tayong limitation kasi sa emergency purchase. I think, uh, attorney grace to, uh, sa budget officer, gaano, magkano lang 'yung, uh... Uh, mga one million lang, no, 'yung allowed?
Value, small value procurement po kasi, wala ng State of Calamity. Uh, one million below, wala namang pong ano dun?
That is only, if we put it in, uh, I don't know how much the N95 ba, N95 na mask, no? Because, I, I'm, I think, I, I think the suggestion of DOH is to use N95, uh, to go against, uh, for protecting, uh, oneself with regard to the, uh, ash.
Actually, mayor, wala namang post-specific, sabi nila pati surgical mask, we still can use that.
Oo.
'Yun po 'yung binigay nila sa atin ngayon.
Okay, uh, so, walang restriction? Yes?
N95, kasi 'yung ordinary cannot protect.
Is N95 a generic term for describing a mask?
'Yun ang name niya, yeah.
Or is it a brand?
Yeah, it's a...
Is it a brand, or it's a generic? It's a generic thing, oh, yeah, that's good. That's a good, uh, situation. If it is a generic description of a product, then I think we have an elbow room, and we'll follow what is, we'll get the best mask, because I really wanted to give mask to our people, as many as possible. And the only way to do it, i- with regard to opposition, is for us to declare, uh, State of Calamity. Do we all agree? You are all elected officials of the city, you represent the people, huh? Yes, Councillor Lu, you're raising your hand, Councillor Lu Biloso?
Um, yes po, mayor. Mayor, uh, sa tingin ko po, tama lang, kasi magiging change reaction po ito eh. Pag hindi tayo pumi- nagawa ng...
Kilos?
Kilos. Hospital naman natin ang dudum...
Mapuno, uh... Lu, we have the same, we have the same, uh, mindset. Kasi, to- today, hindi pa mararamdaman masyado 'yung chronic, uh, 'yung epekto, dahil kagabi lang nangyari, di ba? As we progress in the presence of this ash in our, in our surface, which we are trying to clean, don't get us wrong, uh, just so you know, the DPS, uh... City engineering, and fire volunteers, Bureau of Fires are doing their best to eradicate this ash in our cer- in our surface. But I have the same mindset, Lu, yes. I don't want, a we- a month from now, a week from now, two months from now, our hospitals flooded with chronic, uh, respiratory...
Problems.
Problems with our constituency. Because, uh, I really need, tsaka ang, ano ngayon, di ba, anong alert level na ngayon, na Councillor, uh...
Five.
No, five is not yet confirmed. I, I, so we based what is, uh, last night, uh, anong alert level na Majority Floor Leader?
Uh, alert level four na po.
Okay, ano 'yung, uh, for purposes of, uh, other members of the City Council, what is the effect of declaration of pay boxes at, ano, under alert level po?
Nakalagay po dito, intense sunrise, hazardous eruption is possible within days.
Within days, so pwede 'yan subun- subun pa?
Hindi sabi ni, hindi ba po tapos. Eh, nakalagay po dito criteria for declaration of State of Calamity, when there is an extremely high incidence for other health-related events clearly beyond normal expectancy.
Okay, that's, uh, that's a good provision of the, I mean, we can use that, that type of provision in the rules, in the criteria. 'Yun, base po doon sa sinasabi po ni Doctor Louis, tsaka ni Doctora. So, magkakaroon tayo ng, eh, sabi dito, alert level four, hindi sabi ni, in the next... Pwede pas? Pwede pang mas lumaya 'yung sit- situation because of eruption. So, definitely that will fall under F, kung... Sa akin pong, although syempre, hindi naman po ako expert, pero kung i-interpret ko po tong nakalagay dito. Tsaka na 'yan eh, parang nakikita mo na eh. Eh, ngayon lang po, nagkakaroon ng, parang panigbayin sa... That's why we are, that's why we are having a meeting, para mapapanatag natin ang taong bayan na may gobyerno sa Manila. The government is working, that's why we're here, tama 'yan, that's a good observation. Uh, I'm going to make announcement, kasi in a few minutes after the meeting, going to make some announcement. Kasi importante na, ang tao talaga mapapanatag natin, dahil hindi lang magpanic. Well, one, malayo tayo. We're not trying to belittle the situation there in Matangas, but, uh, remember, what I am after is the fine particles in our air, and air is universal. Okay, always remember that, bear that in mind. We are only about what, thirty kilometers away? Thirty-six kilometers of, of, you know, the ash key, uh, was... Is present up to Platte, no, Platte? So that's way far, uh, you know, sa taal, we are in the middle. So, for whatever it is, uh, we have to accept the fact that we have to address this, we have to confront this. What do you think, Doc? There will be, ikaw as a doctor also, as a head of the MHD, do you think there will be, we will have a, uh... Future problem if we're not going to address this with true preventive, uh, with regard to respiratory?
That's a big possibility po.
There's a big possibility. Okay. Kayo, what, what do you think, guys? Anong tingin ninyo? Uh, I need consensus, uh, what do you think? Yes, Roma?
Sabi nga po nila, prevention is better than cure.
Okay.
Kailangan agapan ang kumunyente, lalo na 'yung mga immunocompromised po mga tao sa, sa kumunyente.
Okay, let's make this quick, so that you can go back to session, raising of hands talang, if we all agree, no? You don't agree, okay lang, uh, let's take the, kasi kailangan kinsigon tayo. What I want, as your mayor, so that we can address and extend assistance, assistance to our citizen, to address as many as possible. While we're addressing what Councillor John Isip, uh, mentioned a while ago, with regard to abuse on the part of businessmen, we have to put the government in the middle. We have to show them that there is government, that we will not allow abuse, no? But, first things first, 'yung kalusugan ng taong bayan. And the only way to address this situation, as far as, so far, as so far, as far as science is concerned, is to wear a mask. And there are some types of mask, uh, that will, uh, help or make it, uh, safer, na mapadoklui.
Safer and effective.
Safer and effective, and to purchase such volume, volume for our people of Manila, for the people of Manila, is, it needs a lot of funding, we have funds, but we cannot just tax it under existing rules, no? So what I'm asking before you now, do you all agree? Do you all agree? In your mind, uh, ano tayo, uh, puso sa puso tayo. You are representing your people, uh, in your respective district, we are representing. My question is, is there a need for us to declare State of Calamity in the city of Manila? To prevent, like what Councillor Lu Biloso said, and the same thing, pareho habing nasisip, ayoko mapuno ang hospital natin later on ng, uh, pasyente na may respiratory problems. Do you all agree that we have to declare State of Calamity in the city of Manila? Raising of hands, uh... Okay, so if you all agree, now, I want to, uh, so that we are not going to maximize, oh, ano talaga 'yung Doc Fox, maubos, 'yung pondo ng, uh, ng calamity? Because we don't know what will happen in the next few days, in the next, uh, uh, months. Hopefully wala na, but, uh, who knows? Only God knows, no? But, uh, okay, uh, with the help of our Majority Floor Leader through the leadership of Vice Mayor, halilang muna, you go back to session, declare the city of Manila under State of Calamity, but can you put, uh, uh, a provision in the State of, Declaration of State Cala- State of Calamity? That we are only to, going to declare it, uh, to acquire mask, effective, uh... Effective mask to be distributed to the people of Manila, uh, for preventive, uh, measures. You know the words, uh, you have lea- you have loyalty, uh, let's finish it today. The, the, the reason behind so that we can acquire for emergency purposes, kasi nakakaunsa. And we have to decide, and we have to decide fast. That's why you were asked, even though it's already, uh, seven o'clock. But I'm grateful to you guys, and I'm grateful to you for saying, uh, that, no? So, go up there, make it official. Tapos, uh, I think your Vice Mayor, uh, has their idea on how to do it, and you have the Majority Floor Leader. Then, uh, I think, uh, I can have that, uh, resolution, uh, after this, no? Then I'll make some announcement to the public. What do you think, uh, Mr. Majority Floor Leader? No, amount, uh, as, as many as possible lang tayo.
For the purchase of?
For the purchase of mask, uh, mask, mask lang. I am not going to ask you many things, because we have proper acquisition. I'm a regular supplier sa'yo, hindi tayo kailangan matarantahan. Hindi, hindi, hindi ni expect na mag, uh, nakaroon ng, magsabok ng bukha, but a regular, bagyo, sunog, we have enough supplies, we have food, we have logistics, we have medicines, yeah, we have enough. So far, on a regular, possible, year-on-year data with regard to disasters and calamities. But for now, ito 'yung tingin ko, immediate care that we can give to our people, to, to keep them safe. Yes, Councillor Bakani, you were raising your hand, please.
Hi, mayor, I just... Hello? I just wanna point out as well, na there's a record po na 'yung Taal volcano, um, back in seventeen, uh, seventeen fifty-six or something, was erupting for as long as six months. So, um, we don't know when the...
Will stop, will, will end, yes, that's a good observation.
I think it's, um, good that we're acting on it as early as now.
Because if we provide mask, they can keep it in their respective household, sa mga bahay nila. As, as many as possible, I hope we can acquire as many as possible, but we really have to ask, uh, yes, Vice Mayor?
We include, uh, purchase of emergency meds because, uh...
Respiratory
Medications or
That's good, good observation.
Kasi uh, dun po sa, baka mo hindi tayo magkaroon ng enough uh supplies, kasi po
Pag lumala?
Pagka-dumali po ang patient ngayon, baka, may po jeepes to ano, to include po
Ayan.
Respira- respiratory
That's a good observation. I hope for the Majority Floor Leader, Councillor Joel Tuwa, sir, the thinking of that. Yes, Councillor uh, Ator- uh, Doctor Louis Tuwa.
Add to the, uh, also nebulizers if possible?
Yeah, we have nebulizers, uh, in place, we have enough nebulizers in our uh health centers and in our hospitals. Good news yun, for the people of Manila, we have enough, it may need, ayan, which is, ang konkwentang ni Vice Mayor. Uh, baka kailangan ni din natin, so we will uh acquire uh extra. But so far, we have enough. Yes, Councillor uh, Joel uh Par of Sixth District.
Thank you, mayor. 'Yung declaration po ng State of Calamity ng city, pati po 'yung sa mga barangay po ba?
Yes.
Their, the funds.
So that if we declare State of Calamity, this is one of the effect, no? If we, as the city government, declare State of Calamity, the barangay official can utilize their fresh funds for the calendar, magagamit nila. And uh, tomorrow, we'll have job assistance, financial assistance to the barangays, tomorrow we'll start, no? Uh, this six, four, five, six, will need, yes, three tayo tomorrow, kasi kailangan, kailangan nila assistance ngayon, no? Para makatulong din sila sa kanilang mga uh constituents. Yes, that's a good observation. Uh, uh, nakalagay po rin nun, that barangays here may authorize their, to utilize their respective uh calamity fund. Pero appropriate expenditures, ah, o, ibig sabihin, okay lang, ubusin agad, appropriate expenditures lang. For, 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 yeah, yeah, uh, for, for Medical purchase lang, uh, non-food, non-food, ah, lagay niyo, non-food. Baka kasi ibili ng bigas, ibili ng, hindi 'yan ang kailangan ngayon, ang kailangan ngayon, gamot at mask. Or nebulizer, they can buy nebulizer also, for the respective communities. So, tama 'yan, ha, good observation, non-food, non-food lang. Hangat maari, ilagay niyo 'yung kulatila. Yes, President, obligan ng barangay, uh, Leila Hunan, please.
Mayor, actually, marami na pong mga barangay chairman na napupurchase na mga uh mask, pero hindi din kailangan, hindi ni N ninety-five, kasi hindi nga po kaya ang budget niya sa barangay, so
That's why uh, that's why we have to decide as a city government, uh, to purchase. But ang maganda kasi dito, they can also purchase. They can also purchase uh such uh generic, efficient, effective mask uh, to protect the respiratory problems later on, yes. Anyone? Pero kayo, mayroob observation?
About making water, non-food ka rin water, you, we need that.
Yeah, yeah, uh, we are going to coordinate now with Manila and Manila Water in a few minutes, I'm sure all the uh, I'm gonna talk to Chief of Staff, Resident Administrator, and all other heads of department uh, 'yung uh availability ng clean water. But, ang payo ko sa inyo, sabihan niyo 'yung mga chairman, mga barangay official, hangat maari, huwag walisin. Buusin ang tubig, o, takotin ninyo, kung kaya't takotin 'yung puti, kasi pagka 'yung buhangin o 'yung ash, binuusin 'yung magiging puti, wal- sa kahalagyan siya walisin, ilagay sa sako. Isengyo, pipikapin natin. Nag-oaugment tayo ngayon, uh, there is a transition period with our garbage collector, but uh, so far uh, things are being addressed, nasa may lang tayo sa, sa taal, okay? And thank you for giving assistance, ah, did you pass it over, Lino?
Yes.
Oh, thank you for giving assistance, the financial assistance to the, at least five uh major uh uh municipalities uh affect, affected by the uh Malaking bagay sa Manila, lalo na 'yung municipalidad. Okay lang, thank you sa ginawa niyo karina, we'll give that as soon as possible. But so you know, just so you know, uh, the very least that you can be proud of, our MDRRMO uh, portion of it, or sources of the City of Manila, were extended since last night sa Patanggas uh area. And do 'yung ibantin natin, mga proud Manilans, uh, you're representing people of Manila, just want you to be proud of it. That our people, uh, in our own little way, uh, are extending assistance to uh the province of Patanggas, and Cavite, and uh Laguna, and they're still there right now. But uh, we have enough here, but 'yun nga lang, kailangan, we're talking about this particular health hazard with regard to the sulfur and silica in the ash uh available to surface. Magiganti kayo, uh, kailangan kayo ng taong bayan, ah? Yes, Vice?
Mayor, uh, we'll reconsider this meeting, kasi nadidito natin po ang mga members ng Disaster Council as uh one na, but kasi I think we need a resolution coming from the Disaster council, bago po namin maipasa ini
Yes, I think uh, Chief of Staff? Yeah, at least uh, but by principle, we have a meeting of minds.
We were already told uh, that we'll convene immediately after the
Oo, tapos, pero mga nakagad uh, ay padala na sa konsero ng Manila. Now na, I seem like now na, nakakaya naman sa mga konsero, uh, the, the, the Way beyond the working hours. Magawa niyo na kagad ngayon, ah, di ako masihi. Okay, anymore? Yes, uh, Konsero Pilitura?
Mayor, uh, mayor, pwede po bang gamitin? Pwede po bang
Wala.
Uh, pwede po bang gamitin natin ngayon 'yung fire truck para kanilisin mo 'yung
Ginaganit natin, we are cleaning up the streets of Manila, we are, yes, we are. Yes, we are, since this morning, uh, I've checked with our fire group, uh, the entire clearing operations are ongoing. Uh, but uh, nakakatong isipin na, may mask na 'yung ating mga empleator na nagigat din sila. Okay, uh, anymore? Okay, uh, having said that, uh, I wish you luck, uh, please take care of yourselves and your families. Uh, please uh, try to gather as many as possible and share it with our fire group uh, in your respective, and, and make, and uh i-assure ninyo, ang ninyong respective districts, that the city government is working twenty-four hours a day uh, to address the, uh, these challenges. And let's, yes, of course, lastly, uh, if I'm not asking too much, uh, please pray uh, for our neighboring province. Sana'y sila'y magre-recover agad, at wala nang maatik tuhang pang mga individual. At sana nga'y, may awan dios, isama niyo sa desal niyo na, maging uh, normal. Then, after your session, go back here, we need to have a a short meeting. Okay?
Mayor?
Malakat ka? Okay, uh.
Oh, sorry, may I ask all councilors to please make themselves available every day?
Oo.
Po muna, uh, for further announcements, baka kailangan po nating mag special session ulit. So, uh, we will update you daily, para po uh, and please always make yourselves available.
Hindi, wala, mag-syret mo po kasi, uh, let, wala na 'yan, we missed that, uh, we go on Monday. Tomorrow, may trabaho tayo.
So, may work po po?
Yes, yes, uh, so, let me and address that later, but say, go back here, a session after your session kala mahalis, you go back here. Thank you for your cooperation.